Day of August two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the King George County Planning Commission to order. So you've got. Seven of us here, anybody participating online? Okay, we have a quorum would stand up for the.
Father, once again, we thank you for allowing us to see another day, you know, and thank you for. The grace and mercy you provided us with, the Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting, the Lord, and give us clear minds and hearts as we go about the county's business, the Lord. Bless those who are able to come, bless those who are these and other blessings, we pray, amen.
Okay, we'll open for public comment. I don't see anyone here, what about online? All right, we'll close public comment. Approval of minutes. Is before July twelfth. Always think there should be Jeopardy music playing at this point. Any motion? Anything that we need to address?
During the move is the minutes of the July twelfth in George County Planning Commission meeting be approved? Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Stay.
Three abstentions, so squeak by, four. Community Planning Officer, Naval Support Facility, South Potomac Dahlgren, is he available online? Mister Hastings, sir, who's yours?
Yes, good evening, no updates tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Plan review, we have none. Public hearing? We have none. Old business, so we have the. Capital Improvement Program in front of us. This is a somewhat of a distillation of the inputs that staff got, so we'll from our. Our commission. Step through these one by one.
Chairman Moss, I do want to recognize that in the attachments for the draft. Parks and Recreation references old projects of our good funding, not what is in your spreadsheet. So we will make that correction. So in the memo, it references the tennis center reconstruction and the park's safety upgrades. Those are inadvertently left over from last year, so I will correct that.
Did they request something to be? Moved forward, otherwise they don't have any, according to the draft letter, they don't have anything.
So in the draft, we put on there what is ranked one and two. However, at this current ranking, none of the Parks and Recreation have that statue. But perhaps after this afternoon, that may change as we finalize each one of those priorities.
Alright, so I'm not seeing it on this list, it's already been removed?
So in including of the spreadsheet, we also gave you the draft memo that we forward to the Board of Supervisors. With our rankings where we highlight those top projects. And inadvertently, those Parks and Rec top projects were left over from last year.
I see what you're saying, okay, no worries. So with that, wanna start at the top with Parks and Recreation. Item one within Parks and Recreation, Barnes Field Park Master Plan and Construction. Comments, thoughts, seven, good, bad, indifferent? I concur.
I'm not quite sure where the mistake was made, but I'm sure the Parks and Rec folks would want. Something in the budget for them next year, I mean, do we consider moving up to two item? Consensus were level three, or do we just? Say they lose out this year?
Well, I think Heather was saying that what's in front of us of the spreadsheet is accurate. But what is in our packet that they're gonna send to the board, uh, there's, there was a cut paste in there?
Yeah, but if I understood, and correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but the draft letter. Included tennis center construction and park's safety upgrades? Are you saying those come out of the letter?
Okay, right here on the board, if you see the first Parks and Rec underline, it references the tennis. Reconstruction as well as the public safety, that is left over from last year. So in that memo, the Planning Commission highlights those projects that the Planning Commission has deemed urgent. So as they are drafted now with the current average rankings, nothing for Parks and Rec has been deemed urgent, which I think is your point, Mister Kendrick. Is that you feel that something from Parks and Rec should be urgent and funded?
I'm just asking the question to the, my fellow commission members, I mean, did we zero them out this year or?
So for example, capital equipment upgrades soccer goals and batting cages at Sealston is a number three and deemed. Necessary by staff priority, do you want to leave that as a three, or would you like to bump it up or down?
I don't have my chops in front of me, I think I probably had it lower.
I'm okay with the two, if you guys wanna move it.
I'm willing to bump it to a two.
Consensus is two, we'll add that.
If we could go back to one, line number one, and just kinda work our way down. What do you think about the master plan?
So I, I talked to Mister Clark earlier today on another, or earlier this week on another matter. And, and part of what I was talking to him about was the master plan. My understanding is that they gave us a concept, but they haven't looked at topography, they haven't looked at, you know. They looked at wetlands, but they didn't really look at drainage or soil conditions or anything like that, so. The fifty thousand that they're asking for in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four to do a study. To really take that concept and validate it as something real. Given what we know right now, I'd be willing to bump that up just to allow them to do the study, I know that I personally. Have, have made comments the last several years to them, to the school system and to others. About developing a plan for what to do with their facilities. So that every year when they come before us, it's a, they're working on that plan rather than us getting a. Fresh set of whoever's sitting there, their ideas at the moment. So, you know, I mean, my, conceptually, the way I think is plan your work and then work your plan. I'd, I'd love to see them take that concept plan and turn it into something real. That they can pursue over the next several cycles, rather than. Waiting every year to see what they're gonna dump in front of us as their new number one priority. I'd be willing to bump it up to a two to get it into this year's, you know, proposal. Just so that we can get them moving in the right direction.
Any thoughts, feelings?
They weren't. But you know. Like I said, I'm just, rather than letting them sit idle with a concept that they've got no way of actually proving whether it's real or not. I, I would like to see them do the plans so that they can modify. Possibly what they're requesting in future years.
So, so it sounds like you're saying that they need to perhaps, I don't know, correct me, I'm just shooting in the dark. Hire a firm to put something together for them?
I think that's what, what I would expect them to do with the fifty grand is to. Contract to a consultant of some sort to do a site study. Is the four a necessary or an urgent?
Pulling that up right now.
Mark both.
As a reminder, urgent is a one to two points, necessary is three to four points. Needed but not required is five to six, desirable seven to eight, and future consideration is nine to ten. So as a reminder, anything that is deemed urgent, a one or a two gets put into the memo. To be funded this year by the board as your recommendation. Three, four is necessary. Needed but not required.
Needed but not required. Well, how about we do that first, we can look at those places where there are discrepancies between the, uh. The name and the number, we'll hit those. Like if it's an urgent and it says seven, or if it's a. Well, I guess if it's. Like a necessary and it says four, then that's probably, uh, the four comes from the Planning Commission inputs that you got. Alright. So number one, still there? Two, three?
I think a four or five, I don't.
I'm thinking of five, I mean.
What'd you say?
I said four or five, so I guess that's a four.
Where's our auction hero, we need him.
Any objections, four, going to four, four once, four twice, but that would also mean that we move the fifty K to the twenty twenty-three year.
No.
No.
Only urgent, one and two.
So we wouldn't be able to get them that, that leg up this coming year.
I think we're pushing them, it's up to the Board of Supervisors to.
Yeah.
Figure out what they're gonna, they'll get the chart, right?
They sure will.
Okay.
I raised it as an issue, I'm fine with what the rest of the board decides.
I think we're, we're all doing with the four.
Yeah, alright.
Uh, softball lighting, Barnes Field Park.
Which is listed as a seven, which is desirable, so it is in line with staff priority. Make that note for every one of these.
It's not going, keep it.
I was persuaded by, was persuaded by, um, making it a little more amenable to visiting teams.
Day in the day. You gotta play this sunlight.
Alright, we've got one for moving up.
And then I added it at a four.
Any others? Moving? From four to seven, seven to four, seven to six?
I left it, I mean, if we're moving the master plan construction, I don't know that we spend money for lighting now. If we're gonna change the park.
Alright, staying at seven?
Stay at seven.
Alright, the next one is the dog park and staff has it as necessary, which is a three, four point. And the Planning Commission has it as a seven, which is desirable.
I'll make the same argument I said a year ago and it's, I mean, predominant zoning here is A two. Um, I don't think, I don't think we need to spend that money on a small, such a small percentage of the population that. Is restricted to apartment living at this point in time.
Yeah, I think it'd be a really nice thing, but I, I don't think it's something that's necessary, my opinion. Any discussion?
May, maybe in the future, but right now, I think is, is where we are.
Alright, we have a four and a thirteen.
The court is saying four.
Okay. Alright, well, next one, so Dog Park stayed seven?
Okay, next is Sealston Sports Complex Playground, staff has it as necessary. Which is a three to four and PC has it as a four.
So good?
Good, next is Barnes Field Park Playground Replacement, staff has it as a necessary, which is three to four. And PC has it as a five.
Heartburn.
I personally had it as a four, but you know, the difference between four and five is negligible, so I'm not gonna argue one way or another.
So there is a difference between four and five in the necessary versus needed but not required.
So it's a difference this year, this will undoubtedly come before us again next year, and it will be one year closer to reality, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure I.
Yeah, and it's not the budget for this year. So if it's a, a five this year, and it scoots up next when it's really allocated in the budget.
Should we leave it as a five? Alright, next we have Sealston Sports Complex Baseball Lighting, staff has it as future, which is a nine to ten. And Planning Commission has it as a nine.
Go for that one.
Alright, Recreation Center as future, um, which is a nine to ten, and. The Planning Commission has that as a nine as well. Alright, Sedell Brooks Park Restrooms as necessary, which would be a three, four, and PC has it as a three. Alright, um, Brooks Park Parking Lot Repaving as a future. Um, which is a nine, ten, Planning Commission has it as a seven.
Yeah, it's not in their budget till twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
I think with the amount of traffic they have in that place, they. So you do years and years of maintenance on a gravel parking lot, you, you, not that big a deal, I guess, but. I don't know, if you're gonna move something up, I think that's a good one to move up, even though they don't have it. Well, if you wanna move it up, just leave it.
One for moving to a seven?
I go there, I go there when the weather is not as hot as it is now frequently, but. I'm fine with a gravel lot personally and doing some maintenance on it rather than paving it, but.
Okay.
Just my two cents.
Leave it, hopefully they get the restroom soon, though, because if you're stuck in a game there, I'm sure right now those outhouses are. Not that good.
Nine?
Alright, next is the Trailways feasibility study, and staff has it as future, which is a nine, ten, and. Planning Commission has it as a nine.
Okay.
Alright, moving on to King George Schools, a preschool replacement, uh, staff has it as urgent, which is a one, two. And Planning Commission has it as a four, which is necessary.
So I, I'll tell you my thoughts here, um, I. I appreciated the presentation, but what I felt was there is a, uh, a, a, a lack of a strategic plan. I felt like kinda we're stumbling from year to year instead of having a vision. So I had a difficult time with this section of the CIP.
So.
Certainly second that comment, I would love to see them do something to get, you know. A good preschool for the residents of the county, but I just don't think they really know. Where or what they really truly wanna do, so. Again, I, I was willing to. Boost the Parks and Recs folks for at least giving some thought to a conceptual plan.
So we can add that as a note in your memo if that is the consensus of the Planning Commission.
So when I, when I spoke to the superintendent or the interim superintendent, um. That's, that's the direction that I went in, because this is a large number, and then again, I didn't feel like they, they had that, that vision. You know, that, that real strong idea of, uh, the next steps, so I do remember. That we spoke and we got this number down to something closer to. Five hundred thousand or a hundred thousand?
It's twenty-five thousand.
Was it twenty-five thousand?
Three zeros for some sort of study.
For the study.
Not ready for it now.
Right.
Is what he's, he said.
Right. Because they're not ready for twenty-five million, so they don't know what they would do with it, so I know when I provided my number on this sheet, I was speaking to. A study for this year and not the full replacement.
So we can add that as a note in, um, your memo to the board, that you are on board to allocate twenty-five thousand as urgent. For a preschool replacement program, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it would be one for a study.
For a study for a preschool.
One for a bulldozer for the old high school.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, Potomac Elementary School ADA Playground?
Wait, 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 if we're having that as an urgent, which I think that we said the study would be urgent, are we doing that as a one or a two?
One.
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 Well, make sure I get it right.
Capital letters.
Okay, next is the Potomac Elementary School ADA Playground, staff has it as necessary, which is a three, four. And Planning Commission has it as a four.
Good.
Okay, school bus replacement, staff has it as a necessary, which is a three, four, Planning Commission has it as a two.
I'm good with it too, I, I just think they, they, they put a lot of miles on their equipment. If they don't get into a regular routine of replacing them, they'll fall behind, so. And them driving around things that aren't. Aren't worthy of being driven on the road.
Agreed.
Right, right now also, your order time is at least doubled, so if you go ahead and order it, who knows when you'll get it?
Well, and the other thing for me is I was concerned about, you know, they had a break in terms of mileage with the, the COVID. Um, release or not being in school, um, but they did address that. As far as I was concerned, saying that they've already kinda skipped a year with their, their budget replacement plan, because they did account for that COVID time. Where the buses were not in use, so I too am good with, uh, two.
Okay, two, next is access control system for Potomac Elementary, uh, staff has it as urgent, which is one or two. And Planning Commission has it as a seven. Which is desirable.
Yeah, um. Personal opinion is. This is one of the things where it's too late to say I'm sorry. So, if there's an incident. And we had an opportunity to do something and we kinda, you know, moved that ball down the field a little bit more and it didn't. Didn't quite make it a priority, um, that's my concern.
I personally gave it a one for partially what you're talking about.
One or two?
One or two?
Gotta pick one or two.
Two it is, one, one.
Next is parking lots and driveways, um, staff has it as a necessary, which is a three, four, Planning Commission has it for a six.
Have we lost any Mini Coopers in potholes?
None to my knowledge.
That's. Are, are we damaging vehicles, I mean, it, or is it just something where it's, it's degrading and it's time to address it, I mean? Thoughts, feelings, ideas? thoughts, feelings, ideas?
We go to a six?
I, I am. Others?
Moving on, preschool roofing as necessary, which is a three, four, and Planning Commission has it as a six.
Yeah.
I have added it to, gotta think about much. Don't take care of the roof, everything else is gonna.
So I go back to the study?
The study?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is, I can understand trying to keep up with the roof, um, so it doesn't, you know, become a real tragedy, but I, I do think, uh, replacing it without really knowing what the future of it is, you invest that much money in it today not knowing what it'll be tomorrow. But otherwise, I'm with you. Did I do the same thing?
I, those pictures are what it made. I see these pictures every year. They're getting worse visually from year to year.
I, I guess I come back to the comment that somebody made in jest earlier about bulldozer. I'd, I would hate to put, you know, half a million dollars into a roof that we decided, you know, within the next year that we just weren't gonna use that building at all, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I would like to see the roof repaired, so it's not causing more trouble.
I mean, I wonder truly just money for a study, so far away from replacing it.
Set a ten?
I don't even know that the old high school needs to be replaced. I'm, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of property that's under the school board's control that I don't appreciate how it's being used. If I looked at the old middle school, I'm not quite sure how that's being used at the moment versus the old high school. Not knowing their relative conditions, just based on perceived age, I, I'd rather pump money into the old middle school and have it right there in that complex of the, you know, the high school, the current middle school. You know, the old middle school are pretty much connected rather than dumping a bunch of money into a really old building that I, I'm concerned a lot of people have an emotional attachment to rather than a reality.
So you're saying that when we, when we bumped up preschool replacement, that was basically a study to see where else it could go now? It was not for future construction necessarily?
Potentially.
That's my way of looking at it. I think it's necessary. If we hang on to the building, they probably do need to get up and do some immediate repairs and patching, but I, I don't see five hundred for a brand new roof for it right now.
So can we caveat that and, and say repair and not replace? Is that reasonable, you guys?
Well, has, has, has it been maintenance or whoever has given the recommendation? Have they, some things you, you just can't repair, they have to be replaced. So do we know where they are in that? Is, is that even, even a choice?
Uh, again, I'll go back to my kinda feeling during that time is that I didn't feel like they had a, a solid plan.
I see.
That's, yeah, that's just my feeling. So that's my personal concern. Is it, has someone taken a look at that? Is it, is it a maintenance issue? Is it that, hey, it's beyond maintaining and it's time to replace? I have confidence in that.
No plan with the largest budget. The largest spend on the whole.
We, we do well by our schools. The objection to.
So if we are adding the note to only repair, what priority number do we want to associate with that?
I think it's a necessary, three to urgent. Of repair.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be all in if they had a study that said, hey, this is where we're gonna be long term. Or it was just beyond repair.
Bump it down to three, four to be in line with staff's recommendation if necessary.
With that note, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we should be modifying requests. You know, the thing about the study was, he said that.
I think they need help. I think they need direction. I think they need some pressure to what that money's gonna be used for. Because right now they're just looking so far out of money, but they don't seem to know what they wanna do with it.
Four?
Three, four, good.
Objections?
No notation?
Four?
No notation?
Four with no notation.
Would you put a notation to repair?
I think so. I think that's, yeah, repair or replace if possible.
Okay, next is Administration. Ralph Bunch Hazardous Mitigation as urgent by staff, which is a one, two, and the Planning Commission has this as a five as needed but not required.
So again, let me make sure I understand what this project is. It's, they're going after a grant.
Yes, sir.
True? That's, we've already done, they've, they've already received one grant for the roof. Okay, this grant is to do mold and mechanical equipment?
Um, it's memory with all, and I think asbestos, yeah.
Asbestos, okay. But we're not signing up here. If we, if we say yes, it's urgent, we're not signing up for five hundred thousand. We're signing up for pursue the grant.
That is my understanding.
So that's what I.
Fine with pursuing a grant.
Yeah, I, I caveated my input with that as well, that it's five hundred thousand in the budget the upcoming year, but that five hundred thousand is really only gonna show up in the budget when the grant is received.
So do you wanna add that to your memo as well? Grant funding only? Not tax paying money, not general fund or CIP fund, uh, money.
Personally, that's what I put. I put a one if.
One for a grant.
If, if budgeted through grant.
So what amount would we consider funding with?
So I, personally, again, I would think it would have to be assessed. Someone, a professional, would have to go out there and take a look and say, hey, here's what you really need. Here's where the troubles are. Um, we can stop the cascading events. We can clean things up, and this is how much it's gonna cost.
Mr. Kendrick?
I think you can leave it at five. If it has a grant, it's a no-brainer.
Well, it's, yeah, I, I get that. I get that. I have, we, we, we have no investment in, in, in that as far as a grant. So my question is, as a, as the county, what are we willing to, to look at?
I guess I would just wanna send a clear message to the board supervisors that we're all in favor of pursuing the grant as strongly as we can. But if it doesn't come through, I'm not in great deal of favor of saying, oh, yeah, go ahead and take five hundred thousand out of your budget and spend it on it.
And I'm not, neither am I, saying five hundred thousand, but what number? Is there a number? Are we willing to do anything? That's my question. And, yeah, again, for me.
Standing that the new committee study of the future is probably be in a better position next year to explain their vision and what kind of supports expected from the county, either in cost sharing and mechanism mechanisms, but, um, there is lack of consensus, I would argue, about, the board supervisor, which is addressing the lack of consensus about the future of the, the building. And, um, yeah, per, uh, it has my full support, but the same issue with the, the school, the preschool is what's your vision? How do we get there? How can we help?
So just, just for full disclosure, I sit on the, on the board of the Dogren Heritage Museum, and I do know that, yes, there are discussions going on within the county about how to use the building. Should it be shared by the three museums in the county? Is it going to be something else? I, you know, personally, I don't have a dog in that fight one way or another, but, but you know, again, just looking at, they've, they've got a grant for five hundred thousand, a good investment in that building. I don't have a problem at all looking for additional grant money, but if we were asking the taxpayers to fund a several million dollar renovation of that building to bring it back to the point where it could be used for something, I just don't know that that's the highest need we have in the county right now.
Until we're asked that, that's why I think preserving this, preserving the structure, conserving the structure until those visions are cleared up and there's consensus on them is important. I'd hate to lose that structure.
If you can get five hundred thousand out of the apartment interior, by all means, go grab it.
I think there's, there's more. I think there's, the full boat is there on the apartment of, of, uh, interior.
Well, the line item is for hazardous mitigation, right? And so the engineering and architecture group has stated mold remediation is a priority. The five hundred thousand will address the list of issues. And that's the line item we're, we're discussing. I know the future of the building is important.
So to me, the way it looks right now is no grant. That was just talk. What it looks like on paper is the county's gonna give five hundred thousand this year. And if they get the grant, it would be another five hundred thousand. But on paper right now in front of me, what, what's, how I interpret this is for Ralph Bunch Hazardous Mitigation, five hundred thousand from the county's budget this year. And I don't agree with that. I agree with five hundred thousand because that was what was spoken to in terms of grant, potential grant money.
So keep in mind, even when you go after grant money, a lot of times that line item has to be in your CIP in order to go after that grant money and receive that grant money. So I think that is kind of important here as well.
Having a higher ranking improves the competitive position for that grant. So I, I find annotating it as.
For, for grant purposes?
Grant only, um, no, no.
For that.
Able this year, this project this year.
Okay.
Well ranked.
So I have it as a one with grant funding only.
Okay.
Good? Next, we have King George Middle School Turn Lane Project Phase Two as future. Um, Planning Commission has it as a seven, which is desirable. Future is nine to ten. Leave it, change it?
Five, seven.
Yeah, seven's fine. It's well. We'll change it next year.
Yeah, it's kinda why I'm thinking it could be a nine even, or eight, something, so it puts it in the future category cause it is so far out.
We do this every year, so every year it comes, it, it just keeps coming back. So next year you adjust it. If it's out that far, you have a chance to adjust it where you are, so just leave it.
So we're leaving it at a seven?
Seven? Seven.
Next is Maintenance Building at Ralph Bunch Roof Necessary, which is a three, four, and the Planning Commission has it as a six, which is needed but not required.
I added it at two. I'd like to see it in a three or a four at least.
I agree with that.
So I'm bumping to a three? Is that the consensus?
Thoughts, discussion?
I'd like to see it as a three or four for the same reasons of supporting the ground. It's, it's conserve, it's preserve, it's preservation.
Yeah, I don't wanna see it fall apart.
Alright, I've got it down as a three?
Three, four, once, twice, four, 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 fours are everybody.
Okay, alright, four.
Four is all the way around.
If I bring a erasable pen. Alright, next is Information Technology Network Management Systems. Um, staff has it as urgent, which is a one, two, and Planning Commission has it as a two. So it makes the memo as urgent. Good? Alright, next is Computer Replacement. Staff has it as urgent, which is a one, two, and Planning Commission has it as a two. Good? Virtual Information Security Office Cybersecurity is, um, staff priority of urgent, and Planning Commission has it as a two. Okay, uh, countywide phone system redundant server. Staff has it as urgent. Planning Commission has it as a three, which is necessary, not urgent. We go with a three?
I think it is urgent.
I'm bumping to a two?
Very compelling argument.
Go on, one's going twice. Okay. Alright, we'll change that to a two.
Virtualize that server that happened.
Alright, nine, one, one. Nine, one, one, S I P compliance software is labeled by staff as urgent. Planning Commission also has it as urgent for a number two. Uh, Maraki Equipment Maintenance Renewals as necessary, which is a three, four, and Planning Commission has it as a three. Okay, new courthouse equipment. Staff has that as future, which is a nine, ten. Planning Commission has it as an eight.
Nine, ten.
Bump it down to a nine?
Nine, ten, future.
We'll knock that down to nine. Next is Com- Community Development. Document scanning. Uh, staff has it as urgent, and Planning Commission correctly has it labeled as a one.
Is this, is it?
No bias.
Is this where it's a chicken and say I had it as a ten? No, I'm.
I, I just knocked that zero off for you, Mr. Kendrick.
I knew I could count.
Next is General Properties, uh, replacement upstairs HVAC unit at the River Cone Building as urgent by staff. And Planning Commission also has it as urgent as a number two. Relocation of general properties as necessary, which is a three, four, and Planning Commission has it as a five, which is needed but not required.
I'm good with five.
We're good with five?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah, I think that they need to take, take a look at where the, the fire department shuffled. There might be an opportunity there. Just me thinking.
Alright, Skid steer for solid waste is deemed by staff as necessary, which is a three, four, and Planning Commission has it as a two, which would put it on the urgent list. Good with the two?
Fine, right.
Alright, next is the Sheriff's Office Countywide Radio System. Staff has that as urgent, which is one, two, and Planning Commission also has it as a two, which is urgent. Next is Fire Rescue and Emergency, Emergency Services Ambulance Replacement Program as urgent, and Planning Commission has that as a one as urgent. Okay, Opticon Pre-Emptum System. Uh, staff has that as necessary, which is a three, four. Planning Commission has that as a five as needed but not required. Good at five?
Five, and then move it to four and get it in there necessarily.
See, I'm good with five. I think it's a nice idea. Um, that's kinda where I was asking it be in my, again, my opinion.
Consensus at five?
Leave it at five. There's a lot of people, I've been watching for them, and a lot of people have them. Cause you can see the equipment on the traffic lights.
Well, they, it, it makes all the sense in the world, but, and I, you know, I personally, I think I I think I called it a three or four when I put in my vote, but, but I mean, how many traffic lights do we have? How much time do they actually? How many traffic lights do we have? How much time do they actually gain? Now, once they leave the county. And they start getting into Fredericksburg or up into La Plata, maybe it makes a little more sense, but I don't know. At two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is just pretty good investment. I I don't know.
Staying at five. Staying at five or moving to four?
Five.
Five.
Five, have it. Okay, Fire and Rescue Facilities has been deemed urgent by staff as well as planning commission. Uh, aerial ladder truck apparatus is deemed necessary, which is a three, four, and planning commission also has it as a four and necessary.
Thank you for emceeing.
No problem.
Uh. Alright, um, looking for a motion now to uh, move this to the Board of Supervisors based on our changes.
I moved for the Planning Commission's capital improvement plan scoring recommendations.
As amended. As amended. Thank you.
On favor?
Hi.
Still on old business? Oh, sorry, you need it.
Alright, so um, zoning and subdivision ordinance update. Berkeley Group provided a um. List of action items and discussions of the hot topics that we. Discuss pretty in depth of last month on this kind of last call of anything that was not discussed, that you would like to discuss. Or anything that should be in that section before they make their revisions.
Anybody anyway? The nays have it.
Nays have it. That's all I have for your update.
That's old business. Uh, new business?
I do not have new business.
Uh, Rectors Report.
Um. In June, we did eighteen new single family dwellings, which puts us at ninety-nine for the year. And we had a total of a hundred and nine permits and a fiscal revenue this month of ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, and I don't think that we had any. New applications other than the Birchwood Rezoning Project, which you will be seeing very soon.
That was coming up August, um, seventeen?
I'm sorry.
Is that, we're we're doing August seventeenth?
That's correct. So my next other business was a reminder of your special meeting on August seventeenth at six P M. Um, that will be um, the Birchwood Rezoning Project. Um, for informational purposes, um. King George County has hired um, Draper Aiden as a consultant for King George County. They are now known as T R C, I believe. So they will be reviewing, preparing staff reports as well as presentations, um, instead of the usual sign faces that you see here. Um, staff reports are being finalized as we speak. Um, there are, say, some minor typos in the um. Finders that the applicant has put together for you guys. So once those are done, they will, you will not only receive them electronically, but we will also be delivering these to your homes. So. Don't shoot the trespass.
Beware of dog.
Or if you have a dog, we're just gonna sling it out. Can't have any more out on workman's comp.
When will those go out?
Do you wanna pick yours up? Okay, we'll have you.
When will they go out? When will they be ready?
They are, they have to be done by tomorrow, and our goal is to have them done by tomorrow evening. Birchwood is coming tomorrow to slip sheet some of these packages. Otherwise, I would hand them out to you tonight. Um, but they will be live on the website tomorrow afternoon, maybe late afternoon, but tomorrow.
I'd be happy to slip by and pick mine up as well. I'm not that far from you. It's just what time do you want me to show up?
Well, I'm not sure, but I will put you and Mr. Decorder down as pickups.
I was thinking the same thing. You close.
Well, we close at four thirty.
Four thirty, okay.
Um, we close our door at four, we shut it down, but if you just knock on the door, we'll open it for you.
Alright, I I can do that as well.
So who wants to pick up? Um, Ma?
But I won't be back until the fifteenth.
Gabro.
Thursday, right? I can pick it up Thursday?
Williams. You can pick it up Thursday morning. We'll probably be safer. And Kendrick. Either way, um, you will have it via your usual Google Docs that we do every time. Just with all the moving parts. And this nice binder that they put together, I think it will be a lot easier for you. Um, keep in mind, um, that this is a different application than what you typically see. Usually, we know exactly what that end user is going to be. That is not what you're gonna see in this application, but they they have proffered down those those uses, so. Keep that in mind. Other than that, I will see you August seventeenth, six P M, in this very room.
This is a public meeting.
This is the public hearing, yes.
Is there any uh, update as to the, as B dot's approval of the Chick-fil-A?
Um, I believe Remi and Kemp called today and they are uh, submitting their revised traffic impact study. Um, any day now, so it is, it's still moving. It is not abandoned as popular rumors have swirled, but. They're still in the game, same location. And that's all I have for you.
Need more other business?
Yeah.
Alright. And we're looking for the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Alright, alright.
Thank you.
Read that you're adj.
Abort us.
Done.
Explain my dogs, watch dog.